Because if a majority of Nigerians say that they want a change, and that change is thwarted by a small group of people who say that they must hang on to power, then there must be a way of showing that that is not going to happen. We're going to ensure as much as possible, and we'll keep emphasizing that, that no one should lose their lives on account of this. That we will work hard at doing. But certainly, it will be, it will be, it is a sort of thing that we must try as much as possible to avoid at all costs. And that's why we're speaking now, and we're asking our friends in the international community, we're saying to the ruling party as well, that we've signed peace accords, we have signed all manner of agreements, that there should be free and fair elections. But that free and fair elections lie almost entirely in the hands of the ruling party. You cannot rig an election, you can't deploy troops, and you know, you can't refuse to authenticate voters' cards and do all manner of things, and then say that, you know, the elections have been free and fair. So I think that it's important, I think a lot of emphasis has to be placed on ensuring that the elections, you know, are indeed free and fair. And for those who are familiar with election rigging in Nigeria, it's not the first time that the ruling party has rigged elections extensively. In 2007, almost every international observer said that the elections were rigged and that the outcome of the election was unacceptable. Almost every single international observer. The EU, the US government, the British government, all of them condemned the way in which the elections were rigged. I'll give you just one example. In one state... And to get back the states that where rigging took place. In one state, in a particular polling booth, and we had to hire, just to show that the elections were rigged, the ACM then, which has become a big part of the APC, had to hire fifty-three police handwriting experts, British police handwriting experts, and ten Israeli handwriting experts. Altogether sixty-three handwriting experts to show that what happened in a lot of polling booths was multiple thumb printing. So one individual simply thumbprints several thousands. And how did we show that? Of course, we showed it by forensic evidence, by the work of these, by the, of the work of these experts. But also by simply demonstrating that if you had, if you say that you had twenty thousand votes in the polling booth, and you voted between the hours of eight and three P M., it's impossible to do so except if each person voted in under ten seconds. And we're able to demonstrate that. So some of the, so some of this stuff is as ridiculous as that, you know? So when you have that kind of bare-faced cheating, it's very difficult for people to accept that that is the outcome of the election. And that's why we're saying that this kinds of outrage simply cannot be permitted to go on.
Thank you very much. Let's give him a big round of applause for that reassurance. Now, I, I do have two questions here that border on the question of inclusion, you know, inclusion now. There is one by Olarinde Farayola, who is hearing impaired, as the person has identified. And he's asking the question that what is your government going to do regarding disabilities? You know, how is your government going to ensure that disabled people are taken care of? And the fact that somebody is disabled doesn't mean that they can't have a good life. Now, another question about inclusion is saying that what are the incentives that your government will put in place to bring members of the diaspora back home to help either in government or in industry?
Okay. First, let me deal with the question of disabled. We have, our social security scheme covers social security for the disabled who are poor, and of course, for the elderly who are poor. So for the disabled who are poor, there is social security. But in dealing with the general issue of disability and the way in which we intend to deal with that, we, we intend to proceed with legislation. Some APC states already have special needs or disabilities legislation. Lagos state, for instance, has taken the lead in this. And what some of that involves is in ensuring minimum standards, certain minimum standards in buildings and in transportation and in car parks for dealing with people, for, for ensuring that people with disabilities are taken care of. For instance, the provision of ramps and other, and other facilities in buildings is standard. It's now legislation, it's now part of legislation in Lagos state. So new buildings, especially public buildings, must have these standards and must enforce these standards. Also, transportation. In public transportation, one out of every ten seats must be reserved for disabled people. Parking also, one out of twenty public parking spaces must be reserved for disabled people. This is already legislation in Lagos. And of course, we intend that this legislation become a national legislation. But with national legislation, of course, national legislation only provides a template or standard setting because every state must domesticate this. So all that the national can do is provide guides, provide a standard that all the states are then supposed to go by. So that's generally speaking what we intend to do about the disabled. In other words, creating opportunity and, you know, facilitating their lives such that it's easier for them to be able to, for them to be able to live their lives in a healthy and, and, in a healthy and at least, you know, acceptable way. The other thing with respect to disabilities is the special needs program. Now, what you find is that several of the special, special needs schools that we have, we have, at the moment, we have very, very few special needs schools. But the APC's plan is to improve, is to improve the numbers, that you actually have more special needs schools and to create a curriculum for special needs. At the moment, we're working with, just on Friday, on Thursday, beg your pardon, as we were in a, a meeting with several private sector individuals who are interested in education and in promoting education in Nigeria and working in different areas of education. And one of the big areas for us is special needs. And we're working to develop a curriculum for special needs children, even autism, you know? Of course, autism is generally well-known in developed parts of the world. But in Nigeria, it just hasn't come to the fore as a, as a problem that can be dealt with and can be dealt with through appropriate teaching and appropriate teaching methods. And we're working on that. We're working on those kinds of, of special needs. And also working on scholarships for the disabled and for different types of incentives and different types of special help for disabled children and for disabled people generally. So our whole program on disabilities is a big one. As a matter of fact, our, uh, one of the key components of the APC's very diverse membership is the disabilities group. And I don't know how many people have seen the work they've been doing, promoting the APC campaigns and doing a lot of work with respect to the APC. And part of it is because they recognize that this is a platform that sees the need to address the concerns of the disabled. As a matter of fact, last week was my birthday and the central, last big Sunday. Exactly a week today, I'm still accepting birthday presents. And what we, and the key theme, what I did was to work with, to... Oh, it's behind us. Oh, right, right, there. To do, uh, to do some work with disabled people who play basketball. And my wife and I have been committed and have committed to continuing to work with, in the area of disabled sports especially. So we think that this is a big area. It's very important and it's an area that we intend to work on. Now, the diaspora issue and bringing in, uh, people to work, our friends and brothers and sisters in the diaspora. I think one of the critical issues is in ensuring that Nigeria works effectively. And I think that without ensuring that the country is running, you know, well, nobody really wants to come. And that's, that's the issue. The reason why you're here is not because there are no opportunities you've identified. It's because you don't, you just don't think that you can take those opportunities and use them to advantage, given the state of affairs as they are. And that's why we think that we need to do a lot of things. We need to clean up the business environment. For example, look at, look at medical care. We need to deal with some of the critical issues around medical care. Medical tourism is big in India. India also has a large diaspora community. But they didn't just come as Red Cross or as help agencies. They came looking out also for business opportunities as well as important areas to contribute to their societies. So we think that we need to ensure that the environment works in terms of investing in, in medical care. One of the reasons why we're looking at our universal healthcare insurance and funding the healthcare industry and participating and collaborating with the private sector to clean up that healthcare sector is because we expect that Nigeria can become a hub for medical tourism in the same way that India has become one. And that we were light years, we were well ahead of India in terms of medical resources, especially medical expertise and all of that. And all of a sudden, that seems to have been reversed. So we think that creating the right environment will help many to come and to come and work in Nigeria. We've also been looking at a program. There's a program which we've talked about quite a bit, which is Nigerian professionals in diaspora coming to work in specialized areas for one month in the year and being paid the equivalent of what they earn in Naira, you know, during that one-month period. And basically just trying to improve manpower around critical areas such as technology, medicine and engineering. And teaching also, in the area of teaching. Especially, uh, teaching, especially teaching at the basic levels and secondary levels. We think that a lot of, a lot will be required in those areas. Our one-month-a-year program, we think and develop into something that enables people to come in, take a look at the situation and see how they can fit in. So those are some of the plans that we have. But the basic plan is to clean up the business environment, ensure that we ease up the, the, the way that people do business. For example, look at just company registration. We think that company registration can be done in a day. There's no reason why company registration should be difficult to do, you know? There are... I mean, if, if you look at Rwanda, if you look at Rwanda, Rwanda is doing company registration in one day. There's absolutely no reason why we can't, why we can't do that. We think also that we can ensure that for investments, you, all we need is a one-stop agency for investments. For example, look at investments in the power sector. Today, many people who are, who want to invest in the power sector are finding it difficult to do so. Some have spent three years just trying to sign power purchase agreements, trying to sign gas purchase agreements and all of that. Because there's so many agencies. And what we think we need to do is to be able to streamline the agencies and do a one-stop agency for power sector investments. The other thing, of course, is corruption. The number of, the toll gates that are all over the place. Corruption has to stop if, if we're going to be able to attract people to come and invest in Nigeria and to do business in Nigeria. Many people are just simply frustrated by the sheer number and the sheer amount of corruption, the sheer number of toll gates, as it were, where people have to pay bribes and pay tips and do all sorts of things. That's the sort of thing we need to work on to make the environment friendly, not just for us locally, but also for people coming from the outside. So those are the sorts of things that we think need to be done.
Let's give him a big round of applause. So we're going to take, uh, from, sorry, from this wing, one person from this wing and one person from this wing, and then one from that wing. So, okay, the lady, the lady in the, in the wine can step up. Okay, the gentleman with the... And then you can stay behind him. All right, so we, we, we're going to take just... Okay. All right. So, so probably is going to take quite a batch of maybe six questions. So, uh, two from here, two from here, two from there. So, the back, we, we come to you. We have people ready there. Okay, so yeah, somebody from upstairs too. Is there a mic upstairs? Okay, yeah. Let's take somebody from upstairs, you know, also. That would be the seventh person. So let's start from, yeah. Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nkemakonam Linda, guys. And I want to bring up the case of immigration. Immigration in the sense that our borders are not closed. Every and anyone can claim they're Nigerian. Because in most cases, you can buy a visa certificate and you go, and that's what you need to get a passport. And because of issues like that, I remember in 2010, when I was in Jamaica, Jamaicans have ten years' multiple entry visa into the United States. India has ten years' multiple entry visas into the United States. And the reason is because they can control the, who their citizens are. And because of that, they are used, they use that, the State Department used that to analyze who is actually misusing the visa issues within the country. And the last I heard was we're trying to get a five-years' multiple visa. And I remember speaking to the ambassador in Jamaica, the Nigerian ambassador in Jamaica, and he said that was not going to happen again. And it broke my heart because it's not fair for a country as powerful as Nigeria. And it's a powerful thing to be a Nigerian. And most people are taking advantage of that. And it's hurting our system, it's hurting us. How would you handle that? You must close our borders and help us be the Nigerians that we are and be proud to be Nigerian.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, the gentleman, then we'll come to you. The gentleman, yes, go ahead.
Professor, thank you very much for being here. My name is...
You can, you can remove the mic, yeah.
Professor, my name is Bella Gladden-Chewood, Voice of America. Recently, professor, uh...
Can you, can you, you can hear you. Can you project a little bit?
Raise my voice like this?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I could do that. Recently, President Goodluck Jonathan admitted that there are foreign mercenaries working alongside the Nigerian troops to clear out Boko Haram in northeastern Nigeria. What do you think of that?
Okay, thank you, good. This is time one, yeah.
My name is Angela Okuribida. I just want to ask three questions.
No, but just start with one, start with one.
Okay, um, how does General Buhari plan to bring a total end to ethnic discrimination? And a second question to that gentleman is that how can Buhari guarantee that those captured under the suspicion of Boko Haram are going to get a free and fair trial? And torture is going to be stopped?
All right, okay. Okay, we, we know, let's, let's take another people too. So the second from this side, yes, ma'am. Please, please remember to introduce yourself. Go ahead, ma'am, yeah.
My name is Shotunde Biola. My name is Shotunde Biola.
Okay.
My question is, I'm tipping it up from Prof's, uh, social pages that grassroots will be well dealt with. And I, from the, from your speech, I can grasp that you're going to do a lot grassroots-wise. My concern currently is that the structure in Nigeria, the three tiers, is not working. The federal, the local governments don't have access to their funds. The state governments use it up. And if we continue this way with all your beautiful idea at the federal level, I can assure you, you're still going to come back to the same point we are. So I don't know how you're going to work in your regime to have this issue reconciled. The other issue is the identity issue, taking it off from the immigration issue. Nigeria has been trying to have identity. We don't still have a national identity. I don't know how you...
You mean a national identity card?
Sure, sure.
All right, thank you. Yes. National identity card, yeah. You, you, you mean a national identity card? Okay, yeah.
My name is Adedamola Ogunobi.
Adedamola?
Ogunobi.
Okay.
God willing, I'm sure APC will be in power come 2015 that we are here right now. My question is this. Back home, we've, there's something happening and nobody's saying anything about it. And that in this, majority of the company back home are employing graduates on contract basis. Instead of giving them full-time employment, we see this company giving people, after spending four years in school, they come out, they get contract job, fifty thousand euro job. What is APC government going to do? Is there going to be a legislation to that? Thank you.
Thank you. So we come back to the sister here.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Olufamilola Akinti, formerly Malomon. Uh, my question actually stems from the immigration aspect. As an immigration attorney practicing here in the United States, I've met with a lot of people that have had dealings with the Nigerian embassy. And my question really borders on what will my prof, who taught me evidence in nineteen ninety-five, and the Buhari-led government, what are you going to do to revamp our international reputation, I mean Nigerians' international reputation?
Okay, thank you. And finally, for this round, uh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Prof, and on to Raj. My name is Clara Isama. My husband, Tony Isama, is the chairperson of APC in this hemisphere and campaigning seriously in Nigeria for the cause of APC and change. My question is this. Fake drugs are killing our people. What will your government do to stem this tide? And I wish you the best in the forthcoming election, Your Excellency.
Thank you. So I think we have already six questions. And then one from upstairs, yes.
Wellington Adebodju, M.D. Research shows the high morbidity and mortality rate among pregnant women and children under five stemming from the malaria epidemic. Research also shows the World Health Organization and roll back malaria initiatives to reduce the burden of malaria. What will your government have in place to improve the uptake of the utilization of these preventive measures?
Yeah, can you clarify? What's the question?
What initiative or init, or initiatives will your government have in place to reduce or to increase the uptake of the utilization of malaria preventive measures among pregnant women and children under five years old?
All right. Good, so that's about seven. Let, let the prof answer. We have about seven questions already. We're going to come back to you. And I'm quite impressed by the questions that people are giving, you know, very policy-oriented questions. Yeah. Policy-oriented questions.
Thank you very much, everyone. I, I'll just take these questions very quickly.
Can, can we maintain some silence, Burden? Thank you.
How can we control access to Nigerian citizenship, especially by those who are not qualified? And then the question of the national identity, I'll take that along. I think that the issue of closing our borders or not closing our borders, the, it, it goes well beyond that. It goes well beyond that. If you notice, the West African subregion, all persons within the West African subregion, the ECOWAS region, can spend ninety days in Nigeria. So they have access when they come into Nigeria, they can spend, they can spend ninety days, and of course, that's renewable. So anyone within the West African subregion is more or less able to appear, as it were, as a Nigerian. But I think that it goes well beyond that because the access to Nigerian citizenship is not even, because you find a lot of Nigerians are even trying to look for citizenship of other West African countries because it's probably easier to get a visa if you are from some other African country than if you are Nigerian because of the sheer numbers of Nigerians who are applying for visas anyway. But I think the major problem for us is generally certification and the respect for official documentation in Nigeria. Just ensuring that official documents of any kind are authentic and that the whole idea of faking documents or presenting fake documents is taken very seriously. The, the truth is that unless that is accepted as a standard in many places in the world, everywhere that I have worked, both locally and internationally, the problem that has hap, the problem that people seem to have is with the genuineness of the Nigerian document. And I think that that's really what we need to work on by ensuring that there is punishment and it is meted out if you are found, if you are found faking a document. It is taken seriously and you are actually punished for it. What's happened, what has happened in the last few years? Years ago, in Nigeria, if you forged a document, it was taken very seriously and you were sent to jail. But in the past few years, going to jail at all has almost become a rarity. As a matter of fact, if you look at some of the figures, and I'll just, I'll just quickly share a figure with you. In the U.S., you have about three hundred million people odd. Two-point-two million people are in jail in the U.S. Now, that's not particularly pleasant. But Nigeria has one fifty million, one seventy million people, about half of that. And only eleven thousand have been convicted in Nigeria. Eleven thousand people. So plus, when you add those who are awaiting trial, there are about fifty-five thousand people altogether. So that means that we're very well-behaved people. So, so it must, it must tell you something about the weakness of our criminal justice system. And as far as I'm concerned, this is something that the Buhari-led government will take very seriously. That is, that is ensuring that our administration of justice system works effectively and that we ensure that people do not get away with the kinds of things that destroy, ultimately destroy the image of Nigeria. Um, mercenaries working with Nigerian troops, of course, it's an outrage. There's absolutely no reason why the Nigerian army, which is in Africa considered an elite army, and anyone who has worked with Nigerian troops, I worked with the Nigerian troops in the United Nations mission, you know, Somal, Somalia. They were the favored army. They were equipped at the time, of course, by United Nations. But they were preferred by everyone who worked in the United Nations operations at that time. And they have always been, the Nigerian army has always been a very good and very... These are just some of the finest individuals you would find. As a matter of fact, in Unisom, the person in charge of the entire military police for the entire operation was a Nigerian, Pat Aken. He's now a brigadier general in the Nigerian, Nigerian army. And so for us to find ourselves in a situation where we need to hire mercenaries to fight off an internal insurgency covering fourteen local governments out of seven hundred and seventy-four local governments is an absolute outrage. And it shows, and it just shows that we've have, we have a government that has, that has completely degraded the Nigerian army and the Nigerian fighting forces. And it's one of the problems, it's one of the problems we've seen. This same government claims to have spent four-point-three trillion on security in the past three and a half years. Yet the troops complain, no arms, no ammunition, no training, no equipment, and all of that. So I, I, I think it's a complete outrage. And I think that is one of the, is just one more reason why we have to end this particular government. And I'm sure that God will help us in the next two weeks to be able to bring it to an end. The ethnic discrimination, ethnic discrimination issue is, again, as far as we are concerned, one of the chief problems that we have is the way that the ruling party in Nigeria has divided Nigeria along ethnic lines and along religious lines. It has made it much, much worse. I mean, for example, describing a political party as a Muslim party, trying to, and trying to paint people in colors of faith or colors of tribe is a stock-in-trade of the current ruling party. And the reason is because there is no other way by which they can possibly win votes, except to try and bring in ethnic considerations, and try and bring in faith considerations, and mix it all up. For example, after describing the APC as a Muslim party, the vice president, the serving vice president, went in Bauchi to say that the APC intends to crystallize Nigeria, because I'm a pastor and I supervise five thousand churches, according to him, which isn't true anyway, right? But that, and then saying, of course, that there are more Muslims in the PDP than in the APC, and speaking in those terms to an audience, you know, to, to, to an audience in northern Nigeria. These kinds of things were never in the past, no one would ever campaign on the basis of religion. It's just never happened in the past in Nigeria, but it has become free, fair now, and that's the way that this has been projected and all that. We think that a Buhari government will unify Nigeria, there will be no question, he said repeatedly, and, and, and I hope we're able to make available the speech that he made to the Catholic bishops in Nigeria, I hope we're going to be able to make that available. And one of the things that he said in that speech is that Nigeria can only be one country. There can be no support for any religion or for any particular ethnic group over the other. We must remain one and must be united as one, and that the business of government is to ensure the safety and security of every Nigerian, regardless of race, regardless of tribe, regardless of faith. And that is so important, because the person who is the president must exemplify that, he must make sure that in his utterances and the utterances of his wife, I dare say, must, must represent the ideals of the nation. I'm sure many of us have read on the internet the utterances of our first lady concerning persons who live in northern Nigeria. I mean, I think it's just completely outrageous. Sometimes when you hear some of these things, you just wonder, that how does anyone represent a country in this way? How does anyone at such a high level speak in these terms? But we think that all of that will be over, and we think that a responsible government will ensure that Nigeria is united along ethnic, along ethnic lines. The free and fair trial of Boko Haram suspects, this is what we're talking about in the administration of justice system. Our system must be able to try people in a free and fair manner. We have a constitution which must be respected, and we intend to follow the constitution strictly in every possible case. There is no way in the world that anyone will be treated differently because they were suspected to be Boko Haram insurgents. Everyone will be treated fairly, they will go through the trial process, as, as will be available to every Nigerian. In some states, in some APC-controlled states, we have the office of the public defender. In other words, government-paid legal defense for those who cannot defend themselves, and those will be made available to everyone, including Boko Haram suspects, if they cannot afford legal defense for themselves. LGs do not have access to their funds, how will we get to the grassroots? I think that the most important thing is that we must recognize that the local government system itself is supposed to be a way by which the state government operates. An autonomous local government is not necessarily a good thing. For instance, in this country, the, the local governments are not necessarily autonomous, right? They're not actually, they don't actually function autonomously. They are created, they are created by states, and they function with the states, and that's a way that we should also operate. The Lagos state created local governments, thirty-seven new local governments, of course, the Obasanjo regime at the time opposed it, but we think that if a state creates the number of local government it wants, and creation of local governments is not tied to funding from the center, but is the administrative convenience of every state, then they will be used effectively. Because every state determines how many local governments do I want? I want fifty, because I think that I need fifty to be able to penetrate the grassroots. Today, local governments are seen as an opportunity to get funds from the center, and that in itself skews everything, and makes it difficult for local governments to function effectively. Of course, there are always complaints, state governments have taken over their funds and all of that. But we think that a local government system that is, that comes from the states themselves will be more useful and will align more with the objectives of every state and with the plans and policies of every state. So we think that if we put in place that kind of system, it will work more effectively, and we will be able to reach the grassroots more effectively. So that, so in some senses, we're looking at our local government system somewhat differently from the way that, that is operated at the moment. Someone spoke about casualization of graduates, and I think that that's an important point is being made repeatedly, that we should have a situation where companies are discouraged from hiring graduates on contract basis, so that they can actually have the full benefits of working in some of these companies. We agree that that is, that is, that should be so. As a matter of fact, the labor wing of our party has insisted that this is an important issue, and, and an issue that we must ensure that we enforce, and we're in total agreement with that. But it's also important to point out that some of the reasons why this is happening is because there are just no alternatives. There are very few jobs out there, and there are just not very many alternatives. So some of the companies that are providing these opportunities have some full-time employees, but they are also saying, okay, in order to increase our staff strength, where we will offer these kinds of jobs. So we think that improving the opportunities will also ensure that we don't have this kind of situations cropping up. And improving competition, even for talent, by simply improving the space that there is, improving industry, improving commerce, will give more opportunities for employment and for competition for the same talents that are available, and many of these individuals are very talented individuals who simply can't find work for themselves. Revamping the Nigerian image, that's a total thing, it's a total thing. We think the Nigerian image is a consequence, first of all, of poor leadership. We think that we must start by ensuring that our leadership is the right leadership, is a leadership that is able to lead with integrity, is forthright, we're not accused of stealing, we're not accused of, of, of misgovernance, and that we are serious in the way that we handle public affairs. We think that that will be a first step in revamping the Nigerian image. But then, of course, ensuring the administration of justice is taken seriously, ensuring that we're able to ensure that there is consequence for criminal activity, that is also important in, in, in revamping our image. Many countries of the world feel that we're soft on crime, we're soft on, on, on crimes, especially economic crimes. We need to show that we're not, that we'll be disciplined and serious about this, and a lot of these things will improve our, our overall image. I think that a serious-minded government that is serious about corruption, serious about administration of justice, serious about giving employment and giving dignity to the Nigerian person, will seriously improve our image out there. And those are the sorts of things we intend to do. Mrs. Isama asked about fake drugs. It's not just fake drugs, fake drugs is a major problem, but just about fake everything, you know? And, and we need to, and we need to, and we need to deal with it. If you know, if you notice, Dora Kuyuli did, I mean, she, she mounted an incredible fight against fake drugs, but of course, that needs to be sustained, and you cannot keep having those kinds of interventions. We need a sustained intervention against fake drugs, and that sustained intervention is the sort of thing we need against the kinds of counterfeiting that we have in practically every area of industry. Counterfeiting in entertainment is a problem, counterfeiting in practically every area is a problem. And I think that it is in enforcing our anti-counterfeiting laws generally, and ensuring that people pay a price for it, that there is consequence, that will make a huge difference, not just against fake drugs, but against every other type of counterfeiting that there is. For, for example, with, with, with respect to even Dora's very determined fight against fake drugs, one of the frustrations she had was with ensuring that fake drug dealers were actually sent to prison. You know, just prosecuting those crimes proved to be difficult, and I think that that's one of the reasons why we need to clean up our administration of justice system and ensure that we're able to convict those who commit these offenses, so that there is a deterrent against these kinds of conduct coming from other people. Then I think there was a question about maternal mortality and the whole issue of utilization of malaria prevention. One of the key issues, of course, we've, we've, we've looked at the problems generally related to maternal mortality and infant mortality. And the key, the key solution that the APC is offering, first is immunization. We think that immunization is absolutely important, and that comes with our conditional transfer scheme. A lot of these issues are issues that are closely associated with poverty and the number of the extremely poor. And that's one of the reasons why our conditional cash transfer scheme, where we will give steepens to the poorest families if they will be involved in the immunization scheme, and if they will enroll their children in school, they will get a steepen for it. So you will find that there will be a drop in infant mortality on account of the fact that people are encouraged by the payment of a steepen, which also encourages them to live healthier lives and to enroll in the immunization scheme. That will certainly drop infant mortality considerably, and that's one of the advantages we intend to get from our conditional cash transfer scheme.
Let's give him a big round of applause, ladies and gentlemen. Yeah, we, we just want to tweak the program a little bit. We've been hearing a lot from him, we've been interacting. I, I want to bring two gentlemen who can talk to us about some of the things that we can also do to help their cause. You know, so we, we, we are possibly going to be able to take more questions, but we want to do this at this time, to also hear what can we do, you know, to, to support this movement. So I'm going to bring Mr. Alex Oko and Senator Tukumbaki Afikuyomi, please come and, and address us very briefly. We will come back to, to take at least a few more questions. Let's give them a round of applause as we make them welcome.